Consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items six A, items eight A through E, items twelve A and B, and tonight's bills totaling seven million eighty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-one cents?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda is approved with all ayes. Moving on to item seven on the agenda. The purpose of the ongoing community development block grant project construction, the CDBG. The purpose of this public hearing is to allow for public comments on the CDBG block grant construction project. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Obviously, I'm not public, but so it is a requirement of our CDBG grant that when we're approximately halfway completed with construction of the project, that we need to hold a public hearing and inform the community on the status of the project, where we're at, what's been completed, and what we see upcoming, taking us to the conclusion of the grant. So that is my purpose here this evening. I will try to keep it brief, as well as answer any questions you have. Once I'm done, again, if there's any people in the community that have questions as well they can ask. I supplied some information to you before council meeting started this evening. One is the required public hearing information that I will go over, as well as an activity log and an upcoming schedule for the next three weeks from our contractor. That three-week schedule takes us to the end of the project, the end of the construction phase of the project. I will go ahead and begin with the required information here. Feel free to stop me along the way if you guys do have questions. So the project is facade improvements that result in historic renovation of approximately twenty-three buildings in the downtown. A component of this is a stormwater project, so the bio-retention cell that's being constructed. There has been one extension on this project that takes us, the grant, through the end of November, November thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Where's the project at? The facade contractor started mobilizing on August eighteenth, and they began work on August twenty-second. The mason, the mason sub for Woodruff Construction, Woodruff Construction is the prime on this project, the mason has been the one onsite the most, and they will be working hard to finish by the end of October. The underground electric work started a little bit behind schedule. There is a few delays along the way with weather and unexpected hitches, but the underground electric work and utility work is substantially complete. As you can see, when you walk down there, all the overhead poles, for the most better, all gone. It feels a little bare when you're down there. So with those delays, we were pushed back two weeks with our facade contractor starting. Woodruff still believes that they'll be able to finish construction by the end of October. We meet with our contractor every Thursday, met with them today, and they're still on track to be done by the end of October. So we'll go through a quick update on each property where we're at. So one hundred East Second Street, masonry is in progress, painting and siding still to be completed. On one oh-two East Second, masonry is completed, still waiting for paint to be completed. One oh-four East Second, windows are in order and will be installed the last week of October. One oh-six, one oh-eight, East Second, let's see, the masonry and the stair cover is in progress, the chimney is being rebuilt starting next week, and then the painting of the fire escape thereafter. One-ten East Second and one-twelve East Second are complete. One oh-four East Second Street, the masonry is complete, and we're still waiting for the painting to be completed. Same thing on one-sixteen East Second. One-twenty and one-twenty-two East Second Street are complete. One-twenty-four East Second Street, the masonry is complete, but the painting still needs to be completed. One-twenty-eight, masonry is complete, painting of the rear stairs and the basement stair cover is still to be completed. One-thirty East Second is complete. Two-hundred East Second Street, tuck pointing is over half-complete. This is the largest building and largest part of the project. There's still much work to be done. The property owner is contributing an extra twenty-eight thousand dollars to get additional work completed on his building, so it's a great way to leverage our grant dollars to get more work out of the project. One oh-four East Second, work has not started yet, it's a very minimal item. Two oh-six East Second, all work is in progress. Two-eight, this building was removed from the project. One-ten East Second, all work in progress, same thing with one-twelve East Second. One-fourteen East Second, the windows have been ordered and will be installed the week of the seventeenth, masonry and painting thereafter. Two-sixteen East Second, the tuck pointing is done and painting will start next week. Triple B began working on the stormwater bio-retention cell September sixth, they have completed that. Plans are ordered, they're going to be picked up tomorrow, and planting of those plants will start next week. Where's the money coming from? A grand amount of five hundred thousand dollars is coming from the community development block grant, CDBG, through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. This project is benefiting the low and moderate income, and the city of Muscatine has a residential anti-displacement relocation act in place for those residents who may be, or may have been relocated due to the project. No residents have been relocated due to this project. There is two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars left in the community development block grant to be spent. Obviously, that's just where we're at from previous. We'll have a change order next week for over a hundred thousand dollars of additional work that's been completed. So that is where we are currently at on our CDBG project. Be happy to answer any questions that counsel or anybody else may have.
So it appears there's one building maybe in the middle of the project that got removed. How does that work?
Yep. So from when construction starts to when construction finishes, the property owners are not able to work on their buildings without it going through our contractor. If there is a contractor that works on it and has to follow the federal regulations for Davis Bacon prevailing wages and those items, there is an exception to that, you'll see some work going on down there. If it is an emergency situation, as determined by the city and with some input from the state, then an outside contractor can come in and work on those in emergency situations. It happened at one oh-six, one oh-eight, the chimney was unsafe, was removed, and the property owner's contractor is rebuilding the chimney.
I'm looking at two oh-eight East Second, it said building work removed from the project. And does that mean that they have their own contractor that's going to do something outside the general?
What that means is they did work to their building, and because they did work to their building during the construction timeframe, they are not able to receive improvements from the CDBG grant. Same property owner has other properties in the project, we're doing improvements to those buildings. Property owners indicated they will make the improvements to their building at their expense in the future.
How about the two oh-four East Second, where there's no work left?
Yes, sorry, I should say yet. The work on that is a downspout, they're angling a downspout to the other side, they're disconnecting it from the stormwater, the sanitary sewer that goes into Papoose, so it's actually going to outfall onto the alley. So there's just a minor gutter and gutter work on that building.
I assume then it will eventually be completed?
Yes.
By the end of the month.
Yes, yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, two questions. One, are we doing before and after pictures?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And when you said the gutters, are they, are we tying all that stuff into the storm sewers?
They're not, so all the gutters, sorry, they're not being tied into the sewer. All the gutters in the alley do outfall onto the alley. The gutters that we are working on additionally outfall in the alley, especially in the two-hundred block, we really want those to outfall in the alley so that that water goes into the bio-retention cell and is managed through that system.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Moving on the agenda to eleven A. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to move to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved with all ayes. Now eleven A. Presented for city council's consideration is the second and final reading of an ordinance amending Title X, Chapters Four and Five of the City Code Flood Plane Management Regulations. FEMA has issued a new flood insurance rate maps for the area protected by the island levee. These maps must be officially made part of the city of Muscatine's flood plane regulations in order for Muscatine residents and businesses to continue to purchase flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on second and final reading as submitted and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, councilman spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to eleven B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding the contract and approving the contract and bond for the two thousand and sixteen sidewalk construction program. Five bids were received for the project with the low bid from Higher Construction Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and fifteen cents. There is one hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this project. Staff is requesting to proceed with the project and look for savings as the work progresses. Any amount over the budgeted one hundred thousand dollars will be funded from road use taxes. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. One of them, of course, you know, brings up, the lowest bid was forty percent over the engineering estimate, so I was just wondering what may have happened.
Jim Edgman.
Mayor, counsel, let me say this straight away, certainly that is not the goal when we do a cost estimate of estimating what construction is, to miss it by that far. So my apologies for that. This is a relatively new program, this is only the second year we've done it. The cost estimate was based on costs from last year. Some of the things we did, we thought would reduce the price, trying to get a little bit more value, and it appears that really had almost no effect. And some of that cost increase is due to the economy. I recently learned that, or was told, that cement prices have gone up significantly in last year. And some of that additional cost was because last year we picked the quote-unquote "low hanging fruit," they were real easy projects. In one case on Dawson Street, all the driveways were already in, and the sidewalk that goes through that driveway was already put in, and I don't think I gave that quite enough consideration for that that was a substantially easier project to do. And so maybe using the prices from last year wasn't the wisest thing in the world to do. But we are using the bids we got this year to start the database, to put all of that together, and hopefully the longer this program rolls along, the better we'll get at it.
Did you have to cut back any because of this?
The discussions that we've had are, and this is a unit-priced contract, and there is all but one of the areas of sidewalk that we're going to put in are around Madison School. And certainly, we want to shoot to do all of those, and once we get through that, if we have realized some of the cost savings that we think maybe will be in there on the quantities, we'll go ahead and do that last one, and if they aren't, then we won't do that last piece, because that last piece is certainly not as critical, and we would just take that and roll that into next year's program. So I think we-
Where is that last piece?
It's in Weed Park, so over towards the dam that's on the lake that's in Weed Park.
Are these four or five foot wide?
Five foot wide, four inches thick.
Three bar?
On a granular base.
Three bar or fiber?
No, no steel, no fiber.
Just pure concrete, three thousand pound or?
The mix that they will use will probably be closer to four thousand pound at breaking strength, but it is very common to do it that way. I mean, most of the sidewalks in town are done exactly that way.
Any compacting of the base?
Yes, of course.
Good.
So if we agree to do this, and it says here we could take the overage from the road use tax fund, what goes undone?
Nothing goes undone, we have a surplus, we're going to talk a little bit about road use, but we have a surplus in road use tax funds.
Enough to cover this?
Enough to cover the additional costs and hopefully the savings as well. Talk about it. When we bid this, just hypothetically, Jim, you're looking at them using our base? Are they using, are we providing base from like the airport or leftovers from something that?
Yes, the base that goes on here, we are providing, for all the contractors doing is placing it.
All they're doing is maybe just getting the depths, doing the prepping, getting forms put in, pouring the concrete, and then stripping the forms and backfilling.
Yep. And stamping the sidewalk poetry in. It reminds, that does remind me that, when we talked about that, and this is completely unscripted, so please forgive me, but when you guys did talk about that, I think that they were going to bring it back up or at least evaluate it again. I don't think, talking to the low bidder, that that sidewalk poetry added pennies to this bid. I don't think there's a significant cost associated with it whatsoever, but I wanted to at least get that in there.
We didn't say, like, on all of it, right? I mean, we're just doing it on some of them, right?
Yeah, maybe two to three, yeah, you guys said maybe do it as a trial basis, and we are evaluating whether we're going to continue to do stamps, there's some other things that maybe would be better and would allow that program to exist and not depend on just doing it in new sidewalk. There's a process where you can do a template cutout and stick that to the sidewalk and sandblast it and stain it, and then there's no depression for the water to sit in to cause damage, et cetera, et cetera, and it would work, and you could do it anywhere you wanted to, instead of having to be restricted to where a new sidewalk would go in. And if you didn't like the poem or you wanted to eliminate, you could just sandblast the surface and get rid of it. Hopefully, that isn't the case.
Are the poems that are going to be stamped on this one, are they the same poems that we looked at?
Yes.
They're the ones-
It's already the ones that you've looked at and-
The ones that you voted on.
The ones he didn't really care for.
I voted to do it, I didn't vote in favor of the poems.
Same thing, you voted.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
I think Nancy has something she wants to say. At next week's in-depth meeting, we will go through all the funds and how they came out compared to budget, and so that will include the road use tax fund. I don't have the numbers with me right now, it's actually in your books, but I don't have mine with me. Road use tax revenues did come in higher than what we'd estimated, and then, so the road use tax fund balance is actually much higher, but there was some carryforwards of equipment. So taking that into consideration, there is sufficient money to, if we do need to spend the forty-two thousand over the estimate, but we'll go through it in more detail next
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
I have another question, probably directed more to Greg and maybe former council members, but in the past history, I know the councils always had the issue of who pays for the sidewalk. And when they redid Hauser Street, I know that was an issue, and there was somewhat of that same issue when they did Cedar Street, so as I recall, the past policy is the homeowner's responsible for the sidewalk, so how do we reconcile this, that the city's putting in sidewalks?
So originally, the policy was, or the city was willing to take out the sidewalk and then be the homeowner's responsibility to put that sidewalk back in. Two years ago, we received a grant from Wellmark for fifty thousand dollars, and the city budgeted fifty thousand dollars to do a hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalks, and then we did that again this, the following year as well. And at the same time, in the past, in two thousand and fifteen, the city council adopted a sidewalk policy, which I can redistribute to every, I'll just include it for everyone as well, but in there it talked about the priorities for replacing of sidewalks. Number one priority being safe routes to school and connectors, where we have gaps in sidewalks and making sure that kids have a safe route via sidewalk to get to schools, and that's where we start at the program, and that's where the priorities, and then the priorities go down from there. But I'll send that full policy back out to the councils for you to take a look at and peruse.
I was just concerned with the homeowners in the past who, I'll use the word, were forced to put in their sidewalks due to circumstances and not with the city's help, and so I was wondering, are we-
There's still a maintenance requirement within the policy as well.
About for new construction, though?
For new construction, we have safe routes to sewer connectors, Andrew, I might need your assistance to run through the, off the top of my head here, the hierarchy of, do you recall those off the top of your head, pull the policy out?
How does that hierarchy?
But I, we'll have to, we'll send that out to you, but there is a hierarchy of replacements.
How does that determine who pays for it?
If it's a replacement of existing sidewalk, the homeowner pays.
The homeowner pays it, but we will go out and remove-
But the city will remove it.
We will go out and remove the sidewalk at our cost, but it is a homeowner's responsibility to replace, and we do have a-
But these are mostly new sidewalks, aren't they?
Right, these are new sidewalks.
Not replacement.
Not replacement, these are gaps and connectors.
Because we got a grant.
Well, initially, we had a grant, and then this past year, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for new sidewalks, including these gaps or safe routes to, safe routes to school connectors. That was identified as a, as a policy or a priority to get those gaps so that kids had a safe way to get to school, and that was going to be done at the city's expense.
But I, as many homeowners, when they built their house, had to pay themselves to put in a new sidewalk, so I'm just wondering.
Typically, that's developer's expense.
Council's adopted a new policy, and that's the policy that we're following at this point.
And some of them were put in by the developer.
Right.
Yes, but I still paid for it, based on the council.
And I paid for mine, too.
And you're going to pay for the taxes, but after they put a sidewalk and street in, your taxes are probably going to go up, so you're going to be paying that forever, too.
Can you add, Jim?
I just thought that I would add to it, Andrew coached me up on this, but there are some instances in the past where homes were built where there was no sidewalk put in front of it, and I am not aware of any instance where that exists, where the city has forced them to put a sidewalk in. The only policy is that if it needs to be replaced, if it's in bad shape, then they institute this policy of removing it and replacing it. So I think that is kind of directly related to what you're saying, there are different classes there, and if it, if it managed to get built without a sidewalk originally, and that's kind of what this is doing, is filling in some of those gaps.
In addition, we have Cedar, Colorado, Mulberry, and the CSO project, all of those sidewalks are installed at the city's expense.
True. Because we were doing a street.
Correct.
Thank you, Jim. Does that answer your questions, Alan?
I'll send out a copy of the policy. I'll send out a copy of the policy.
I'm not happy with the answers.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none.
Sorry.
Hearing none, councilman Saseo, how do you vote?
Yes, aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Ray Walt?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plat for the county park subdivision. Muscatine County has filed a combined preliminary slash final plat for the Muscatine Point subdivision located at thirty-five hundred Harmony Court in Muscatine. The county has accepted a purchase offer from a local developer for the building and approximately five point two-four acres of land at this location. The proposed subdivision is necessary to facilitate this sale. The remaining real estate will be retained by the county and likely become a part of Discovery Park. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I was just kind of wondering, when I saw the, saw the motion, I looked at the plat and I realized that, I thought it was the county home, the tall structure, is that-
No, it's not that.
It's not that, including that, but what are they going to do with that? If you would.
Mayor, counsel, my name is Eric Furnas, on behalf of the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. We're currently, we've accepted the purchase offer of what's commonly referred to as the Optima Building, that single-story facility there on Harmony Court, the three-story former county home building, which is in the past, the recent past housed the DHS offices. That's scheduled, we're going to be preparing RFPs to have that actually demolished, and then the intent is to revert that space back to green space, which will be turned over to Discovery and County Conservation.
Oh.
So we attempted to sell that, there wasn't much interest in that building at all, and it's aging and requires a lot of maintenance and upkeep, and it just, the justification just wasn't there, so that's kind of-
I was just kind of surprised, I heard that today, then, and I, and I was, you put geothermal in, you had redid that part of it for DHS, and I was just kind of surprised that there wasn't a developer available to give it to, if nothing else.
I think we were to, however, I think the regionalization of the mental health services has played a part in some of the space utilization, some of the county building, the community services building has adequate space now, and seemed to make sense to place DHS there, we're able to accommodate that there. Again, we did try to market that building, we're going to attempt to harvest some of the newer geothermal components for use elsewhere, as much as we can from that facility.
How new is that geothermal?
How new?
Yeah.
I believe that's only, I'm going to say, three, four years.
Yeah.
We might be interested in some of that.
Well, is that like eight hundred thousand dollars or something like that?
I don't have that exact figure on what geothermal components cost.
Some of the components, I'm just thinking. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Eric, thanks for coming tonight. Any other discussion? Hearing none, councilman spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to eleven D on the agenda. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement with KRE LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. On September fifteenth of this year, city council set a public hearing for October twentieth on several amendments to the urban renewal plan. These amendments include a proposed development agreement with KRE LLC for the redevelopment of a commercial facility. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, October twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, councilman Fitzgerald, how do you vote?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all eyes. 11E, presented for City Council's consideration, is a resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement with Harrison Lofts, including annual appropriation tax increment payments in an amount not to exceed $675,000. On September 15th, 2016, City Council set a public hearing for October 20th on several amendments to the urban renewal plan. These amendments include a proposed development agreement with Harrison Lofts for the construction of an apartment complex, which will provide for low and moderate income housing. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, October 20th, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question. On this one, it says that it's low to moderate income housing. Is that something that we're, we're governing as far as that goes? Or are they, do they have a structured system that's keeping their housing tenants to be within income levels to be that?
This program was, was the program that the City Council approved, the submission of a tax credit application to the state of Iowa, that, and they were approved for their tax credit application. Along with that came a TIF agreement up to $675,000 towards the project at the intersection of Harrison Bandag Drive for the project. There's a minimum in the agreement of 25%. I believe it's, it's a much higher percentage in actuality of, as part of the LMI program.
And, and that's fine. I, I know that this was passed, I guess, prior to our, or me being in here. But what I'm asking is, it says it's going to provide low to moderate.
There's a range.
He wants to know, are we the ones that's vetting whether or not they're low?
Are we, are we governing that? Is, is, is our?
That's through the state's tax credit program, and they'll be required, I believe it's over a 10-year, is it a 10-year period? Do you recall? I believe it's, it was a 10-year program.
So, they're not going through Section 8, they're not going through any types of programs through us?
There are 12 or 13 Section 8 projectures, vouchers allocated to this project.
As part of that tax credit program, there was...
Ah, that's what I was asking.
That's what he's asking.
So, it could be Section 8 and, and low income, and up to where people are going to pay full amount.
Correct.
Market rate, there will be market rate units in, in the, in the program as well.
So, in some aspect, we will be benefiting in some aspects, but you know, it's...
We put that out, the Housing Department put that out for, for RFP at the time for tax credits. We had two applications, one withdrew. This one proceeded and was awarded the tax credits, along with the vouchers and tax increment financing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all eyes. 11F, presented for City Council's consideration, is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs and unpaid rental inspection fees to private properties. Periodically, the city takes action to assess unpaid nuisance abatement costs and rental inspection fees to private properties. The fee being requested for assessment at this time totals $14,820.46. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Fitzgerald, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all eyes. 11G, presented for City Council's consideration, is a resolution setting a public hearing on the lease of certain premises located at the municipal airport for fixed base operations. The proposed lease has been reviewed and approved by the current lease, La Cie Carverero, and by the Airport Advisory Commission. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, October 20th, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
So moved.
Give it to Michael.
All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all eyes. 11H, presented for City Council's consideration, is a resolution setting a public hearing for vacation of utility easements in the Riverbend Second Edition. The property owner has submitted an easement vacation plat for a 10-foot wide utility easement composed of two adjoining 5-foot utility easements located on lots 16 and 17 at this property. The property owner plans to combine the two lots. Prior to any formal action by City Council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place Thursday, October 20th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Fitzgerald, how do you vote?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all eyes. 11I, presented for City Council's consideration, is a request to approve the proposal for supplemental soil borings for the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project. Proposals were received from two firms with the lowest proposal amount from Braun Intertech of Cedar Rapids in the amount of $14,270. The cost for the soil borings will come from funds budgeted for the Mississippi Drive Corridor Project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Alan?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Please, where are the borings going to be taken, please? Where are the samples going to be taken? Or do you know?
Jim Edgman is going up to the mic.
Thank you Jim.
Mayor, Council, Mike, could you repeat that? I'm not sure I caught that.
Sure. Do you know where they're going to take the samples?
Ah, yes. The area on Mississippi Drive, along where that, where there's, where there's nothing, there's just a bluff. Some of those borings are there, and then some more of those borings are on the opposite riverside of Mississippi Drive, along where the old collapsed railroad tie retaining wall is. And then there is just a couple more a little further to the south or down river from there, along in that stretch. We utilized to the fullest extent possible existing, previously done soil borings, but in that area, there really wasn't a lot. And one of the things that's afoot, if you will, is we are thinking now that maybe we can eliminate the need for that retaining wall along there with, with this project. But it is, before we decide to do that, some additional soil borings would really be the right thing to do there. So, that's, that is part of the need. The rest of it is to just cover the project a little better than what we had with the existing soil borings that we had, had used.
Thank you Jim very much.
And it sounded like you expected you might have to do more down the road.
Yeah, I mean, the whole idea was that we would do this, and I think we have saved money. I know that's that funny thing, again, you spend money, but you save it. We saved money, I think, here. It's my opinion that we saved money because we, we have bulldozed this forward, and you're not just saying, okay, we're going to do soil borings on this whole entire thing, and find out that maybe some of it you don't need. This is specifically targeted for a specific need.
For what need?
Slope stability analysis in that area where that retaining wall is, and then slope stability analysis close to where that, just that bluff is.
So, these aren't for environmental reasons or anything like that?
No, it's not for environmental reasons. It's just strictly geotechnical and soils analysis they want to do.
Now, if everything comes out good, you're proposing that we may be able to not have to put in a retaining wall?
Yes. No guarantees here.
I assume part of that keeps in mind that the vibrations and everything that are train passing would...
Vibrations of trains, soil moisture, traffic above it, yes.
Thank you Jim.
All right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion is approved with all eyes. 11J, presented for City Council's consideration, is a request to approve the closure of Dick Drake Way for replacement of the existing railroad crossing approximately 900 feet southeast of Grandview Avenue. The crossing will remain closed from October 11th through the 13th of this year. The governing agreement is currently being reviewed to determine what, if anything, the city will be billed for this project. Staff is working with CP Rail to see what can be done to minimize the expense to the city. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you Phil, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd request that the council table this to the meeting on October 20th, which would allow the CP an opportunity to demonstrate that maintenance is actually required at the intersection, and that we bring it back at that time.
I agree.
Table till the 20th.
Does that require a motion?
Yeah.
Yes. He just did it. Second.
He did a motion, okay.
Tom, you, you made the first...
Tom made the motion to table. Phil seconded. Any further, well, no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion is tabled. 11K, presented for City Council's consideration, is a request to approve the contract for the HVAC maintenance at the Public Safety Building. The city has negotiated a contract with Total Maintenance Incorporated, TMI, to provide the necessary maintenance for the HVAC system for an annual sum of $8,988. Funds are available in the building and grounds budget to cover the expense of this contract. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all eyes. 11L, presented for City Council's consideration, is a request to approve a CVB marketing proposal. Three proposals were received for the CVB's proposed marketing plan, with the CVB Board recommending approval of McDaniel's Marketing in the amount of $22,607 for a nine-month campaign in digital marketing. Staff is in agreement with the Board's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Santos?
Have we, have we seen this?
Yes.
Yes, it's included.
It was emailed to us.
It's included in the packet?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion?
I just want to indicate that when I saw this proposal, I was very happy to see it, that I think Musketeen can benefit by a, I'll use the word, professional company to help promote Musketeen.
Yes, sir, and absolutely, highly recommend it from the Quad Cities CVB as well.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all eyes. 11M, presented for City Council's consideration, is a request to approve contract modification number two for the CDBG Downtown Revitalization Storm Water Project. The contract for this project was awarded to Triple B in the amount of $69,558. Change order number one, previously approved by City Council, had amended the total contract amount to $33,682.50. This contract modification amends the contract price to $39,458.50. Grant funds for this project total $40,000. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we anticipate any more change orders? Will we stay under the 40?
I don't anticipate any more change orders, but we do have an additional purchase for the plants. That is $14,000, I'm sorry, $1,455. So, we will go over the $40,000 allotted for this, but we will use other funds from the $500,000 total to account for that.
This is the bio swale, right?
This is the, yep, the bio cell.
It's a small part of the, the $500,000 CBGD grant.
So, yeah, that's why I'm, because I just asked earlier, but I think on the storm water, and then you're saying that this is, this is part of the bio cell?
Yes.
Okay, so this isn't actually getting into the storm water?
It is.
Basically, our water that we're running off of the roofs of the buildings or whatnot are going into...
We're diverting it to the bio swale instead of putting it in the sanitary sewer.
Okay, which, okay. It's not going to the river.
Yeah, no, you're, you're absolutely correct on it. So, yeah, the cell is, infiltrates the water into the ground. If there's any, let's say we have a major rain event, there are assist, there's an overflow system within the cell that takes the excess water and does then put it into our storm water system, so that we don't have standing water in the cell that becomes a mosquito issue or anything like that in the future.
Are you good Santos?
Just a general question about these bio cells. Do they need to be cleaned out once in a while so that they don't plug up, so to speak?
There, there is some maintenance that needs to be done with it, and we've worked with, we've had discussions, we'll work with the Pollution Prevention Control Center, John Cook. They're doing a ton of storm water improvement projects down there, and John does a lot of training and education as well, so working with him, working with our Parks and Rec staff to make sure that the maintenance that is required is done properly. We, we have a schedule of preventative maintenance and checkups that we do on the cell to make sure it's being maintained properly. Keeping on top of the preventive maintenance really hopefully keeps us from having a larger issue down the road.
Is this the first we've done in the city?
This is the first that the city has done in the city. There's been some private companies that have implemented these systems, but this is the first one that we've done as a, as a city entity.
We'll also be able to tap the, the expertise of our new Public Works Director, who was in charge of installation of a number of these in Davenport, and is very familiar with the systems, so. Mike, did you, apologize, do you interrupt?
Thank you.
Mike, did you have something to ask?
Yes, yes, please. Adam, if and when that overflows, where does it go?
Yes, the overflow, actually, and I encourage you when you, when you get back, Mike, to go down the parking lot, and you'll see, you'll actually see where we put the trench, but we have a six-inch tile that takes the storm water, I would say it's probably 100 feet to, towards Mississippi Drive, and connects into a storm water inlet.
This is, this tile is, is underground, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What happens when this face overflows? Where does it go?
He just told you.
When, sorry, repeat that question, Mike?
When it overflows, where does it go? And that, that's what Adam was referring to. If, if we get a large rain event, it'll, it'll flow into the, to the duct and into the storm system.
But that's Plan A.
No, that's Plan B. Plan A is, is that the storm water will, well, not until next spring, when the, when Plan A is that the storm water will, well, not until next spring, when the curb cuts are made and after the plants have had a chance to establish, but the water will go in and infiltrate into the, into the, into the...
The ground.
Ground and the sub-basin slowly at that point in time. If you have that large rain event, it'll go into the storm system.
Okay. The reason I ask, we have some neighbors across the alley who have serious problems with the city, virtually every day it's high water, and that's the whole last place in the world we want anyone to go to. You know whom I speak?
Probably.
Their garage is down below the garage of the alley level.
Yeah, level four.
And they've heard all about Plan A and B. This is the new Plan A and B. To be conscious of, please.
Absolutely, Mike, and we've worked, we've had discussions with those property owners, and all in all, this project works to reduce the amount of storm water going into our storm water system, so it is an improvement to minimize the amount of storm water or going into that system.
And the water from the alley will actually be directed to this, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Other than towards the buildings.
Right. And another great, another great element of it, it also helps to filter and clean the water, and I think all of us have seen some of the stuff in the alley, so it'll be a great benefit for water cleanliness as well.
Worth giving it a whirl. It's just, boy, that silt washer, that will fill up real fast. You can see how well it works. Thank you, sir.
Mike, this is Jim Edgemont. Your point is when all heck breaks loose and you get that storm that can't go anywhere, where does it go from there?
Yeah.
Basically, as I understand it, when you get that, the emergency overland flow route that would come out of this would be into the parking lot and down the parking lot and into that same inlet that's down there, and if that can't handle it, it goes into the street from there. So basically, it all flows away from that alley.
Because we had one of those within the last 12 months.
Yes, and we had one in the 12 months before that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Jim, very much.
Okay.
Jim, one last question. So when you, when they designed this, we went six-inch tile, but what is the main sewer header that we have for the storm? Is that like a 14-inch that goes to the river?
Underneath this bio-swell?
Yeah.
No, the big one that runs...
That one's from the inlet.
Oh.
From the inlet to this.
I have no idea how big that storm sewer is down there.
It's 100 years.
This is, this is what I know about storm sewers, though, no matter how big it is, there's always going to be the rainstorm that will flood it, where it can't take it all. So you always have to provide for that emergency overland flow route, so that it can flow somewhere you want it to go, instead of somewhere you don't want it to go.
Just a lot of surface area for a six-inch tile.
But the six-inch tile is only just what's in the bottom of this bio-swell. It's, so on most things, you capture it, you would capture it, has a chance to sit in there, so it's like a little miniature detention basin. But yes, you'll have events that will flood that, overflow it, and it will go on down into the lower end of that parking lot.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great news. Thanks again, Jim.
Thank you both. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all eyes. 11N, presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve contract modification number three for the CDBG Downtown Revitalization Facade Project. As with this type of project, contract modifications are expected as unknown issues present themselves. The total of this contract modification is $13,043. Remaining grant funds will be used to fund these additional work items. Is there a motion to fund these additional work items?
So moved. Or second?
Phil and then Allen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Request is approved with all eyes. Moving on to 14 on the agenda, communication from council members. Councilman Fitzgerald, do you have anything tonight?
I have nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Councilman Saseo?
I had gotten, spoke with some homeowners recently about the downtown facade. I wanted to just comment about the great work that your team's been doing, and Adam and Jim. So I was very pleased to hear how happy they were, as far as, and Andrew, as far as what they were pleased with the work that we're doing, and I want to congratulate you guys for keeping up on top of that and keeping us up to speed on that. I also had phone calls in regards to the challenges that we're still having on Mulberry. I'm hoping that we're able to eventually get that road open soon, Jim. And I want to be able to get an update if possible, so I can have some, something that I can address to that. If there's some moment, I don't know if that's something possible, we can ask on that.
I think there's also one...
Did you say you wanted an update?
Just a brief, a brief, yeah, just kind of a brief date.
Mayor, Council, we pave the second half of what is paved out there now tomorrow morning, starting at 6:30. Phil will be there, I know, so anybody else that wants to come along and see it, please, please come on out.
I will be awake.
Because I can promise you, we'll wake, if Phil's not awake, we will wake him up.
Park in your driveway?
Yeah.
Come on over.
The plan that was just discussed, and I know there's an update that's coming out very, very soon to you guys on the project, but just in a nutshell, the plan right now is that tomorrow we will pave, next Friday, we will get to the first half of that next piece, because everything else is done. The sewers are done, all the stuff that needs to be done is done in that next section. And then the Friday after that, they will do the second half of that. And then there will be, I will guess, a week, another week or so of driveways, and we will get that open to traffic from there.
We've got three or four weeks' worth of, just a very brief update on what they're going to be working on, that Randy's provided, that she'll have tomorrow in your inbox.
Potentially mid-November, the road could be open?
Before Thanksgiving?
For sure, before Thanksgiving, potentially earlier than that.
Now, they're not, they're not gonna, we're not opening that before the sidewalks are in, are we?
Um...
Where we got cement trucks and contractors doing...
I just said street.
I was just asking about the streets, is all they were asking me.
That's what I'm afraid of, though.
If we get a decent break in the weather, sidewalks will come along for that, but can I guarantee you that we'll be able to get all the sidewalks done? I can't. I mean, certainly that is the goal. Get the street, get the sidewalks, get the driveways, get everything graded off so there's no big huge holes or anything around there, get the detention basin done, graded. But that's the goal.
So the sidewalks may end up being next year?
Maybe.
Okay.
I certainly wouldn't think all of them, but some of them.
Got it.
That's a good point. Maybe what we should do is focus on trying to get them all done on one side, so there's at least a route all the way through it. We'll talk with the contractor about that, see if that's doable.
You can manage that. I just want to be able to get an update to, and then you're telling people right now where we're at.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you again, Jim. Anything else, Santos?
No, thank you.
Councilman Harvey, do you have anything tonight?
I guess I'd just remind the public that this Saturday is the last second Saturday, so I invite everybody to come down on Saturday and enjoy the festivities on Second Street.
For...
Pardon?
For what?
Second Saturday.
Second Saturday. It's been going on all summer since I said it.
They call it Second Saturday.
It's called Second Saturday.
It's called Second Saturday.
It's the last one.
Fun and games, and I guess we're going to have a...
I'm guessing you haven't been there.
It's like a street.
Kind of a street fest, yeah.
I thought it was a farmer's market, I don't know.
You have a special email coming your way tomorrow.
You will now. Oh, man, all right, no comment there.
Do you have anything else tonight, Councilman Harvey?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman Spread?
I have nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Councilman Ray Walt?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Staff?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. I just had a couple quick things. The next coffee with the mayor is October 29th at Riverside Cafe in Ward 3, Councilman Spread's Ward. And I'm working on a food pantry drive. The food pantry is really struggling right now. They're seeing 130 to 140 people a day in need of food, and they're asking for people